The Rose houses is very dissimilar to the existing houses. But I think, I believe it's a different, it's much a different style. It's more an upgrade than the existing houses. It's probably more like, more modern, more, it's a more style, more from today's style. So it's dissimilar, right?
I just think the size is quite, quite large.
But anyway, it's actually up. Like if you go drive through the neighborhood, it's not actually like level with the street. It's actually, you're looking up at it. So it actually looks bigger than it really is visually from the street.
I just think the approved rendering still is similar compared to what's around is not as drastic as far as being futuristic, in my humble opinion.
The other thing that's kind of confusing is the photo. Is that photo or rendering on the right?
It's a render. It's a render, both renderings.
It looks almost like the frontage is like half or something. It looks, because maybe it's skewed or something.
I think that's what it is.
I think we have to see something a little bit more.
I mean, one of the things that is different is, I mean, from the left, the picture on the left is, it's much a taller roof. And the way we, the way it's proposed now is, the roof is not that significant. It's more the building is higher and it gives it more sleeker, more sleeker look.
How far along is the building right now?
How far along or what?
How far along?
How far is it built?
Oh, I'm not sure. The framing is, framing is done. It stands there. I mean, I'm not sure exactly.
Who's the frame?
I'm not sure. I wasn't inside, I don't know.
No, they have windows and stuff in too.
Dude, I would like to see what they have.
All right. Take a look.
Give you a better comparison of the size?
Yep.
Yeah.
Field trip for the board?
Let's go on a field trip. Yeah, the fire department's gonna take us.
I'm sorry.
God, we gotta tell Jim this is why we need that extra truck.
Yeah. Kelly, while we're waiting, and did we hold a public hearing for the last one? I don't think, I think we did.
Did we?
It wasn't. We did not, right?
Yeah, considering the letters that we got in.
Yeah, I know. All right, so what's the board want to do? The board wants to go take a field trip and look at?
I would like to go take a look at it before I make any kind of decision myself.
Yep.
I think it seems reasonable, right Kelly?
Yes, to go take a look at it. It might give you a better, like the board was saying. The power's gonna go out.
Yeah.
The board was saying that it looked almost a little skewed. Maybe it's the angle of the rendering that may assist the board in making a determination in terms of the gross floor area and the, and the building footprint if you go out and see it. Though again, I will say when considering how to proceed with the application, you would be proceeding as though...
With new application.
It's the new application that they are requesting. And the building's not there.
Yeah, especially the windows here. I'd like to see what that looks like compared to what's around.
Okay. This is one of those cases where you actually have the benefit to go see what it actually looks like.
Yeah.
No, but we don't encourage that.
No, we don't. Ask forgiveness, not permission.
So I'm guessing the board doesn't want to do anything else tonight until they go out and look?
That would be my vote.
Agreed. Want to do a public hearing? No.
I don't.
So just for the board, you already declared this to be a type 2 action and you did receive a local determination under GML. The last two things that you're really considering are whether or not to hold a public hearing or to waive it, and Ridge Pres.
Public hearing, it sounds like I heard from the board that we want to waive the public hearing, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now with Ridge Pres, does the board want to wait till they go out and take a look?
Has the height changed?
Yes, it's taller.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
I think it's six...
Six feet higher.
Six feet higher, right?
Yeah. So that's what the board wants to see on field, you said, right?
I mean, if we're going to take a look at it, you know, it's not gonna speed anything up for the applicant if we vote on that now.
No.
Can we also see, unless I don't have it, 2D elevations? Or am I missing?
I believe it's in the submission.
The actual, yes. I think it's actually in, sorry, bear with me. I have the old and the new application mixed together, so I don't want to pull up the wrong one.
As long as it's not mixed with all the 16.
I think it's in the one called ARB booklet 13124.
Oh, okay.
And it's got the, uh, proposed...
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Do you do the right state?
Is that what you're looking?
Yep. Yeah, I was looking at the wrong file too.
Yep. My...
What mine looks like? Mine looks like this.
ARB booklet 13124? ARB booklet 13124? Are you looking at the right 16?
Mine looks like Kelly's, I think. Six of 12. Oh, you know what? It's like it's just the boldness. It's the boldness of the line weight, that's all. It is the same.
This is, this is it. That's a question?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I have that you just put up.
I was on page six, you were on page seven.
Well, if you want to get particular, then yeah. Okay, so it's just a different page. Apparently the lights went out here and out there.
One of those nights. All right, so...
Way you public hearing.
Right, so, so I think this is what we'll do to keep the application moving is, is I will make a gentleman's promise to put you guys on in a July meeting.
Okay.
So the board will have this, this board will go out between then and now.
Okay.
Take a look. We'll bring you back in July. And then you'll have your, you'll have your decision and I think, right, I think it's fair to say we can have a decision in July based on what the board sees, right?
Yeah, you can offer us a resolution, you can change it at the meeting. If you want.
Can I just email you for it, or? No, right.
But, but I could put something together and then we can stick it at the meeting.
Okay.
Which has been done on other applications, but this way you'll have at least the outline for it.
Okay. All right, is the board comfortable? We're not, again, we're not committing to anything.
Yes.
But if the board does decide to go forward, then we're not bringing the applicant back again.
Right.
So we could if...
Yeah, but I'll mark you with that.
You got every, so I'll offer a motion to have council draft a resolution of approval.
Seconds.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, so I...
See you in July.
We'll see you in July.
See you in July.
I'll have my tan.
I believe her.
Thank you.
All right. The next 16, ARB for 16 Janus. Review and discuss ARB and Ridge Preservation and Proposed Demolition of an Existing Dwelling with Reconstruction of 11,000 square foot Single Family Dwelling. Said property is located 16 Janus Drive in Highland Mills and is known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map, Section 204, Block 1, Lot 89.
Good evening. Larry Hartman from Hartman Design. A little overview on this project. This project was before the board, at a previous ARB, Ridge Preservation. At that point, we had the house a little bit more to the left where the existing septic is. We thought we're gonna be able to have municipal sewer connected to an existing sewer line. We went to the board, so this is how it was previously. So it was to the left side of the existing dwelling. Actually, we're standing at the front on the right side. But we did not get approval for that sewer line to be connected to the road. So therefore, we are changing it back to the place where the existing house is and keeping the existing septic the way it is. So the new, you guys received the new one?
Yes.
Six.
Oh, you know what? It came in...
This one?
Yes, that's the one.
Okay, so that's basically, so now, because of the lot getting wider, where we proposed the house, and now this is gonna encroach, if we move it back to where the house, where the existing house is, it's gonna encroach in the setbacks, which I believe we're gonna have to go to the ZBA in order to get a variance because the lot is much, is not as wide in that area. So we would like to ask the board if we can get a referral letter?
Yep.
And if the board has any questions on the house, the proposed house, or?
So we have, I think, what Kelly, we have the pre-existing non-conforming, right? That we have to confirm with the building inspector?
Have to confirm that, but I think that they do require a referral to the ZBA. And in doing that, I just had one question for the applicant. That rear deck, is that a second floor deck or is that on the main floor?
I would have to look at the floor plans for that. But that is on the main floor.
That's on the main floor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's a side deck too, right? That's elevated?
There's a side deck, but I was concerned, because the code has different provisions for decks if they're elevated or not elevated in terms of setbacks. So I just, I couldn't tell from the revised submission, I didn't know what had changed.
I believe the grade slopes down in the back, so even if it's from the main floor, it's gonna be elevated.
It's gonna be elevated?
Because, I'm gonna take a look at the elevations.
So is it like a walkout basement and the deck is above it?
No, but that's not the basement. It's gonna be from the main floor.
But if you walked out, you'd be walking out underneath it?
Underneath it.
Okay.
Seven feet. Looks like it's seven feet, the finished floor elevation and the grade, 877.
Yeah. Take a look at page 7, is...
Sure, yes. So I think this should be referred to the building inspector for determination on whether or not the lot area is legally pre-existing non-conforming. The applicant needs a referral to the ZBA for the rear yard setback. Our memo discusses mostly Ridge Preservation considerations, but the next memo will incorporate ARB concerns as well. That is also part of your purview for this application. Our memo does note that the proposed home is 40 to 86% larger than the homes that were provided for comparison within 300 feet. So that's something for you to consider. The board should consider whether or not the home is visible from the view corridor. We've noted some comments on the Ridge Preservation portion of the code where the applicant proposes white siding, so that's not permitted under your code. Also, they're proposing a metal seam roof, so they should confirm that that's non-glossy to confirm compliance with your code requirements. An updated tree plan should be provided since the home is now shifted back to its original location, although, you know, again, it wouldn't matter, but the, it's being increased in size, so there may be some changes that you want to look at on plan. A public hearing should be scheduled or waived as permitted by code, and we defer to Kelly on secret recommendations.
Questions for Natalie?
Is there any, it looks like, it's kind of confusing, like the grading on the driveway looks like it doesn't quite work. Is there any like increased runoff because of that?
I think that we would only be considerate of that if it was greater than one acre disturbance. And I think that because of the home being in its original location, there's probably not going, but the applicant should confirm though. Please provide the area of disturbance on your next mission.
I'll do a slope. Basically, the 883 line gets moved a little bit, so now the next line is all the way up. So it has less than, I believe, the 15% or 10%, 15% I believe is the code in the, I believe it's way less than the 15%.
Might be up to 12, I think, but yeah.
12, maybe 12?
Yeah.
Because, that's why that 83 line gets moved down a little bit.
Gotcha.
Either way, either way, I'll put the slope on the, on the sideline.
I mean, I'm just gonna restate what I was stating. On the wrong 16, this house compared to anything else in the 300-foot radius is monstrous compared to anything else.
But basically, again, the, if you take a look at the, how is it called? The 3D rendering? Take a look at the 3D rendering and then you...
I'm not looking at rendering, 'cause I'm looking at actual square footage.
Correct. But if you take a look at the houses around it, again, this is not part of a subdivision that was done after 1990. So it's basically not part of a subdivision. So if you would take a look at the houses around it, everything is different in size and everything. And also, it's not visible from Ridge Preservation area also, which means...
Yeah, I'm not talking about Ridge Preservation. I'm talking about ARB and the size of the house compared to houses with a 300-foot radius.
So question, is this, since this is not part of a subdivision, is this still subject to ARB?
It is. I emailed your coworker about that, that I was in error in April when I said that it was not. I had looked at the law quickly that evening that was online, but it had not been, yet been updated to go back to what it was, so it is subject to ARB. But I let him know that in an email a month or so ago.
Question, is it subject to ARB because it's subject to Ridge Preservation? Because looking at the previous, I know it's not updated online.
It's not updated online. But I would have to go back and tell you exactly why, because I don't really have internet right now, because we keep losing power. But I did look into it and I went over it with him in an email.
Correct. So what I believe is, is I did read the previous one. It also has the same start off as ARB is made for or any single-family residential that is part of a subdivision after 1990, which means technically this is not, this was done, this subdivision or whatever was in the subdivision then is before 1990. But I believe the reason we are subject to ARB is because there is a, there's a comment or whatever in the Ridge Preservation that if it's subject to Ridge Preservation, it is also subject to ARB, something like that. Am I correct?
There is that provision, yes.
Correct. So, again, so originally, if this house wouldn't have been part of the Ridge Preservation, this technically wouldn't have had to have ARB, this wouldn't be subject to ARB, which means it doesn't have any limitations on the house or whatever. So this is part of the Ridge Preservation, but after all, it's now visible from the Ridge Preservation.
Okay, Kelly, is this house subject to ARB?
Yes.
Okay. So there we go. Subject to ARB, correct?
It is subject to ARB, so that's second...
So now, subject to ARB, comparing it with other houses in a 300-foot radius.
Correct, so I'll...
It's monstrous.
So that's why I would ask the board if possible, the, it does say in the Ridge Preservation that if it's not visible from the view corridor, that the...
But it doesn't get you out of the ARB.
It doesn't get you out of ARB.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I was getting for. So it does say that you can, you can waive all or any requirements that Ridge Preservation needs since it's now visible. And since one of the requirements is that this requires ARB, so want to ask the board if they would consider that, since they're allowed to waive, that, that one of the conditions is that you need to have ARB, ARB review if they would waive something like that.
So the provision though, that it's then subject to ARB is not in the, is not in the Ridge Preservation section, that's in the ARB section, so that waiver doesn't apply to Chapter 8. You'd still be, you can certainly make the request, but the board doesn't have that ability.
What?
To waive ARB.
Isn't, so that was my question, is the ARB only required because of Ridge Preservation or because of the, or because of the ARB?
I told you that I would have to...
Uh-huh, okay.
...give you the exact reasons, but I did correspond with your coworker.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that email. It was my understanding that...
But even if it is just because it's in Ridge Preservation, the Ridge Preservation regulations allow this board to waive certain things in Ridge Preservation, the requirement for it to be subject to ARB is not contained in 310-13. It's contained in Chapter 8. So you can't waive Chapter 8 by 310-13. It's a separate chapter, separate provision, so the board doesn't have the ability to waive ARB just because you can waive things in Ridge Preservation.
Correct. I'm just gonna ask it one more time, just to get clarity. If the only reason that it requires ARB, most of the houses require ARB regardless because they're built after 1990. But if it's built before 1990, which means technically it wouldn't have been required ARB, correct? The only reason, if the only reason it requires ARB is because it's subject to Ridge Preservation, then that's part of a condition of the Ridge Preservation, which says in the Ridge Preservation that you are subject to the ARB, if that's...
There are different sections of, so you can't waive Chapter 8 under Chapter 13. It's not, Chapter 310-13 doesn't require you comply with Chapter 8. It's Chapter 8 that says you're subject to ARB if you're subject to Ridge Pres. But if you want to take another look at it?
I'll take another look at it. To me, it'd look like in Chapter 13, it says, if you're subject to 13, then you were automatically subject to Section 8. That means if the board has a right, since it's now visible from the view corridor, to waive any requirement that Ridge Preservation is, one of the requirements is that it has to comply with Section 8, and automatically, that's one of the...
We can, right now, we disagree, but we're both gonna go back and take a look at it to confirm our positions.
Again, I'll look at it again as well, I'm not...
But the applicant is asking that if you have the ability to waive ARB, would you consider waiving ARB for this application? The board should talk about that.
I would say no, if we're gonna take a little poll.
I'm a no as well.
Yep, no, well, it also says waiver, like in the code, it says you can waive it if you, if you're trying to avoid similarity of buildings, but I think this is like, this is, this is like...
Yeah, there's no similarity.
Yeah, so no.
So that's four noes.
So, doesn't look like they're gonna waive ARB.
But we can give you your, we can give you your referral to the ZBA for the variance.
And it's a type 2 action.
All right, so I'll offer a motion to refer this application to the ZBA for any and all variances that may be required.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Also offer a motion to type this as a type 2 action on the secret.
Second.
Questions? Favor?
Aye.
I just have one underlying, was this approved for water use or does it have a private well? I didn't see that anywhere.
It's private well in septic.
Private well in septic. They went for an out-of-area connection.
The sewer I knew, I just didn't know where the water stood.
Yeah. I mean, so, I mean Larry, I guess at this point, we'll see when you get back from the ZBA. And if you and Kelly want to, you need to discuss it offline.
All right, Rick.
Thank you.
We'll also send this to the building inspector for the lot area question, if that's okay.
Yes. Boy, John is not gonna be a happy camper tomorrow. He's gonna get inundated. For his first week, for his first week here, he's getting inundated. All right. KJ, Emergency Access Road. Review and discuss materials to construct a 24-foot wide gated emergency access road extending from Divine Road and Frankfurt, Frankfurt, yeah, Frankfurter Road into Village of Palm Tree to connect to Acres Road in the Village of Woodbury. Said property is located on Acres Road and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 213, Block 1, Lots 28.12 and 29-1.
I was gonna change this town of Palm Tree and go to...
Yeah, I saw that on something, we'll talk to Maria and get it all. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name's John Capello. I'm an attorney with JG Law, and I'm here with Joel Mann, the project manager on behalf of the village, to discuss the connector road. I'm gonna start off here really brief, just explaining what this is. When it says emergency connector road, that's exactly what it is. I saw the letter discussing the use. And the use here is going to be this, the fee ownership of the property will continue to be owned by the current property owner. The Village of Curious Joelle will have an easement allowing them to operate and maintain this road as an emergency connector road because, as Joel can explain a little better than I do, if you go up the map a little bit, you can see there is, I'm down the map, I'm sorry. There is often traffic problems at Deneb and Frankfurt related to emergencies that has had an impact on children in buses, school buses traversing the roads. So from time to time, it has been necessary to look for an alternative in the times of those emergencies. So this will be, in those times of emergencies, open to all members of the public who need to traverse that to avoid the Deneb Frankfurt Road. Once again, only in times of emergencies, as we explained, the road will be gated, but when it is not gated, it will be open to the public. Therefore, it is a public right of way under your definition in the code. I will explain that to, because as you know, there is no definition in your code, and if a term is ambiguous, the property owner is entitled to deference of the opinion. So I think it's pretty much clear here, it is a right of way. It is for the public. There is nothing in your code that says it needs to be for the public on a 24-hour, seven-day, seven-day-a-week basis. So it will be gated, but when it is not gated and it is needed, it will be open to the, to the public. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joel just to explain a little bit more about the specifics of the road. We know, once we hear the board's initial comments, we do have, you know, some engineering and a lot of technical work to do, to do the final design in response to the questions. But we're here tonight to present it to the board to clarify that issue and to hear your initial comments.
Good evening. Good evening, Joel Mann, behalf of the applicant. Quite a while since I was here last time. So basically, if you can look at the map, if you can zoom a little bit to the entrance on the project that's on, down on Deneb Road, it's all the way down.
Which way you want me to go?
To the right.
More, more to the left.
That way?
No, no, the other side, the other way.
The other right.
Yeah, you can see the Curious Joel School District at the bottom left corner. All the way to the bottom.
Down?
Yeah. Okay, right there. You can see Deneb and Bakertown Road.
By the poultry plant?
By the poultry, yes. So Bakertown Road, that's the main, one of the main highway roads in the village. The entrance to that project, couple of the units, is from Deneb Road. You can see it's, goes up the hill till the top of the, till where it meets Frankfurt. Then there is a loop inside on this project. Yes. So this is the only one entrance to that project. Recently, there was a lot of, there's a lot of improvements going on on the main roads. Utilities, sewer work, water, drainage, there is actually a road widening project that still traffic lights everything on Bakertown Road. There's a lot of closures coming up and sometimes, if an accident is happening and it makes, puts a big burden on the, on the, on the property, on the residents in that subdivision, in that condominium. So therefore, the village proposed to put this emergency access road that will only be used in the times when there is an issue using the main entrance on Deneb. The proposal is, if you can look at the grading, I know there was some comments, so again, I know there's a lot of engineering comments, we got that letter. The proposal is, if you can look at the grading, I know there was some comments, so again, I know there's a lot of engineering comments, we got that letters. This was just an initial concept, to make the board familiar with that, and to see what fundamental concerns the board have. As soon as we can move forward, we will do a full design, plan, drainage, utilities and everything. The Acres Road where it's being connected, the elevation's there, it started is 792. The intersection, Deneb and Frankfurt, where it's being connected is 811. So it's about a 20-foot difference, plus a minus. The only thing is, there is a low drop in the middle of the road, so we have a low point of 776, about 774. So that's basically what happened, so the road by itself will be pretty straight, whatever, it will be not more than 10% probably portions of the road will be even 5%, portions 8%, so it will be a pretty safe slope elevation. And yes, that required some fill and grading in the area, we proposed that in order to avoid retaining walls, make this road, since this is not a road that's being, was going to be used every day, that should be at the less cost. We provided a pipe to the drainage of water should be able to cross through with, to a head walls on both sides of the road. It's just, like we said, conceptually. So, again, the width of the road, 25 feet, whatever, it can be 24 feet, just to make sure that while it's being used, you have a safe two-way traffic on it. Otherwise, our, the main roads in the village are basically 37 or more. This is just, like we said, a narrow road, to just be able to use it as the emergency instances. So with that, I'm here to address any comments, concerns from the board. And again, we will address all the technical comments going forward with this, the application, how it moves forward, thank you.
So if it's an emergency access road wise, it needs to be 25 feet wide? We have plenty of them in Woodbury, and they're not 25 feet wide.
Because when it's going to be used as an emergency, there will be, like, for example, we'll just give you an instance.
It'll be wide?
Well, just give you an example, when, last time when we had an issue, the intersection was rebuilt, straightened out, the down, the intersection of Bakertown Road, probably when you see it on Google Maps, it's still, it's still away from, there is an intersection, Deneb and Israel's Upnik and Bakertown. No, down, down, still, a little bit more, move it a little bit more to the right, to the right. Yes, okay. So you can see, you can see, there is intersection, Deneb, Bakertown, Israel's Upnik. So the old Israel's Upnik Road was away from, not across Deneb. We just recently straightened that out with Israel's Upnik. While the work was happening, this, mostly of the work was tried to do it night hours, night times because of that. We didn't want to block the Deneb, one-way traffic, we have to close it for a couple hours, was a lot of hard communication on that. So, I want to explain, while it's closed, when we want to have it really that times, we need to have the traffic, like buses or anything, should be able to go through the road safely. So that's, again, I can make it 22 feet, if that's something that, for time being, like, for a couple days in the year, being used as a, as a two-way traffic. But that's what I'm saying, while it's being used, we cannot have it as a one-way traffic, we want to have it as a two-way traffic.
Evan, it's not an emergency road anymore, I mean, an emergency road is, is an issue, and emergency vehicles have to get into a site. This is because of poor planning. You now need another way in and out, because, and what I, what I don't get is that when they put all the apartments up on the other side of Devon here, my understanding was there was originally supposed to be a road that cut through there, and the developer decided he wanted to put more apartments there, and they took the road out.
No, I will explain, I wasn't involved in the original development, so the first development Frankfurt, but I was involved in the new one. We tried, I was negotiating with the owners, the problem is, if you open up, whatever, if turns up back.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the monitors keep.
No problem, if it turns up back to Google Maps, the only way of connection through that development was only through existing driveways. Very small driveways, where children are playing, actually, yes.
Down here?
Down here, down avenue, one of this, actually, if you, it's not up on Google, I aligned the roads from the new development, three areas, at least one or two areas, I aligned the road to be able to open it up, I tried to negotiate with the condo owners, but we couldn't get it. The people that live there fight against it, so.
What is to say that the village doesn't declare, the village can declare an open emergency because of the traffic situation? And it just becomes a two-way road?
Then it would become a road by use, and we'll have to, yeah, yeah, no, then it would need to come, come back and be designed as a road. We, this is part of the review we're going through, and part of the discussion we're having, that it would be gated, that it would be controlled, that if that is the concern that you're raising, we can address it with you, or work with you and your emergency personnel in the village to address that situation, so that situation does not happen.
So if it is gated, only emergency personnel have the ability.
Yeah, but we went down this road already, we had to put a boulder in front of the road, because it was being, it was being abused by.
There's only one side of the table that is, has the key, correct?
We can work out who has the key, if you have a concern, if we have the key. Well, then let's learn from that and see if we can, and we can work it out.
Because of your, because of the village's poor planning.
Well.
Why should you come onto the village?
Oh, I think we gotta take a step, first we've gotta go to the building inspector and get a definition of a public right of way.
So it does have to go to the building inspector, but based on that Google map, so what's happening with all the parking for the supermarket that's there? You're losing all the parking for the supermarket?
I don't know.
We have to check that, I mean, that's a question, yeah.
It's a very good question. I was just staring at the little map.
That's a relevant question, it's a good question, we'll have to address it, I don't, you know, I don't know the answer, but it's certainly.
If they run out of parking, they could just park.
Well, Peppermint's supermarket, that sounds fun.
Well, you know, I, I know it's, it's potentially joke, and I know there's the history here, but we're here tonight to try to make a situation better, and to see if we can work something to get better, so I mean.
First of all, I'm a little taken back, there is no history here, I've only lived here 10 years, there's no history here.
Well, you just said there was history, I'm not, I'm.
Nobody on this board is here when the last time this application came back in 97, everybody here is brand new.
But on the poor planning issue, I mean, if there was poor planning, and I'm not gonna argue that there may have not, that's my point. The history may have been, there have been poor planning, but what we're here tonight is to try to see if we can make the situation better. So I didn't, I wasn't casting expersions on anyone, I was just saying, this is the hand we're dealt with. We're here tonight to see if we can make it a better hand and work with the board.
But the issue is, look, there's, you have, ESO can get in there, you have fire aerial apparatus around the whole building and everything, so this is not an emergency road, this is an inconvenience road, when you need, and you're inconvenienced, you have to use this road.
It's, it's during the times of emergency to have a connector that would allow people access that would not impact the, the ability of emergency vehicles to access the site, would not impede their area to get to the site quickly, and, and would allow a bypass, that's.
Well, on that logic, then you should create access roads everywhere, because if there's an emergency here or there that's occupying a street, then people still have to get routed some way somehow, I'm a little.
I wanna, I wanna add a note if I may.
Sorry. Am I going the wrong way?
No, that's right, have you looked at going out Deneb to, oh, you're gonna try and make me say that, Rats?
There is a major drop.
Oh, that's why I asked.
It's about the 60, there is about 34, 40-foot retaining wall with a one-on-one drop slope, you can see it live.
Okay, now I see the retaining wall, I thought it was just.
It's impossible, actually, we have, we have one, we have one other way out, but that will be a much longer, much, and I can show you on the map if you want to make it smaller.
Which way, sorry, we don't have.
No problem.
We don't have touchscreens yet.
That, that area, so basically, we can technically, instead of going out that way, we can come out this way, and come out all the way to country with 105, it will just be a longer stretch.
That's part of my, and not to get into the, you know, in traffic, not to get in your lane here, no pun intended, but that area coming out of Acres is off of two curves, that you start putting a lot of traffic through there and trying to make left turns out of there, somebody's gonna get killed over there. That's not the place you want to put a ton of traffic coming out of Acres Road. I mean, the intersection of 105 and Bakertown down the street is a disaster. It's a complete disaster, I mean, people are pulled across the road, the road's blocked all the time. You're gonna have people using this as a cut-through, and that's what's gonna wind up happening, and you're gonna start making left turns onto 105, and that's gonna be a completely dangerous situation, it's on two blind curves.
Yep, let me, let me add something to the board, and I think it's, we have no, we have nothing to hide there. We have no issue coming before the board and telling for the board, listen, we want to make the public route out of it, to be able to use it as a secondary entrance and to loop everything. We have no issue with that. If we have that in plan, we will come before the board and tell that, and do that, and follow whatever we need to do. We know that's a process, we will follow the process, and maybe at one point, we want to do that. Fact of the matter is, the reason why we are here is because of the emergency incidents, that we had a lot of pressure from the residents. That's the only thing why we want to do it now, and why we want to do it that way. We understand if this will, at one point, one, someone wants to use it as a permanent road, you need to do a traffic study, we'll follow everything. It might be that one day we want to do it, we'll follow it, we'll apply for it, we'll go through the process. We're ready to comply whatever you want to, whatever safety measures that you want to put in, to make sure that it's being only used for the emergency access. We're here to work with you, and definitely make sure that you feel comfortable with that kind of approval, so.
And the board appreciates that, and I, you know, we're gonna go, I think it's gonna turn into a circular conversation at this point. If it's truly an emergency road, and it's for emergency vehicles to get in there.
No.
Then you can make it a 12-foot roadway and they'll fit.
It's not for, we were thinking, we started, actually, I will tell you the truth, we started with that, to make it like just a road for emergency vehicles to use it. Then we decided, it's not, it's, if we were doing it for, just for emergency vehicles, it's, we have some, 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 some issues, that sometimes, that we have an issue with the residents, for example, there's one little entry for all these residents. Any type of, there was an accident at one point, just at entrance where the poultry comes together, was an accident, like, for two, three hours. No single resident was able to go to their house. So, that two, three hours, yes, we want to use that, but again, we want to use that for all the residents, but just for that two, three hours. And again, we're, like we said, we're ready to put, like, have a full, exact description, and maybe a set of measures, how you measure what type of emergency operation, whatever we need to do, we need to have in order to be able to open this road. But this is exactly the samples, when and why we need it for this kind of events that happened once a year, maybe twice a year, that's it.
But, so you understand, I spent 20 years in emergency services, right, I've shut down plenty of neighborhoods because of accidents. Someone not being able to get to their house for three hours, because there's an accident, or a gas leak, or a fire, sucks, and it's an inconvenience, but it's not an emergency. You not being able to get an ambulance in, or a fire truck in, that's an emergency.
Right.
And I, I think this board could totally get behind you saying, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna make it a 12-foot, 14, whatever it is, road, so that we can get an ambulance, a fire truck, a police car in there. Someone not being able to get out of their home because there's a water main break, or a gas leak.
I.
You can't argue.
I understand, no, I'm not, I'm not going to argue, what I'm saying is, it's, might be a difference when you close the road, it was a road maybe leading to 10 families, 15 families, not to 400 families. Then you will ask me, so wow, how was this proofed and built? It's a good question, I'm now in charge of planning, the last, the last eight, nine years, and things are getting better, and we fixing everything, whatever. All the roads are looped now, there's no such, even similar type of developments being done like that in the last 10 years. So, but again, this is the fact.
I think right now, probably the best thing is to refer to the building inspector to have a, make its determination on the right of way, correct Kelly?
Well, that would be the next step.
Cause that's, that's gonna be like a big hinge point here.
I think it is, I'm just also looking at some of those, could you go that way on the map? I'm trying to think if, if this is maybe something temporary, there's, go a little bit more to the dirt.
Well, you said it was a longer route that they could take to get to 105.
No, 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 and I'm not saying to go out there, but they're right now looking to go out to Acres Road. There looks like there's three potential new roads going in, Comarna Way, and then three through the dirt area.
So are they existing, it's not helping, everything is existing.
Oh.
If they're paper roads, so at some point, someone planned to put them there, apparently.
Oh, see, when I dropped the little yellow man there, it's still dirt, so I just thought maybe, but I thought that maybe that would be helpful, okay. Yeah, so the next step, going back to being a lawyer, the next step would really be referring it to the building inspector to see if this does qualify as a public right of way, it is in, it's his determination, he interprets the code. If he determines it's not, and they want to go to the ZBA for something like that, I would say also refer it to the ZBA, so that they don't have to come back and forth. And in terms of seeker, you could declare your intent to serve as lead agency and type the action as unlisted. If it goes their way with the building inspector, then they can just come back here, but you'll at least start that process.
Okay, alright, so why don't we do those three things? First, I'll offer a motion for a referral to the building inspector for determination of a right of way, public right of way. Second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Then I'll offer a motion for any and all referrals to the ZBA, should they need one.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, then I will, third motion is, I will type this as an unlisted action under SECR, and declare I intend to be lead agency.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank, thank you very much, I just, I know everybody wants to get home, although I'm not sure I do, cause I gotta.
I have no power.
I got a text that I have no power, so.
I have the power at home, so.
But, I would like the opportunity, if you give me a few days, to submit something to your attorney, to submit to the building inspector, just, you know, stating our position as to the public right of way, then, the other thing is, I understand it, just so we can go back to the drawing board potentially, the concern is who's gonna control it, and when, who's gonna be able to use it, and, and how wide it is exactly, to see if we can, you know, as we're working through this, come through some type of compromise that would, you know, would address your concerns and still meet the, the underlying goals of the village. So with that, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Everybody be safe.
You too, get home safe.
Hope you get power by the time you get there.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Alright, we have one more thing that's not on the agenda, Mr. Ming has been, whoop, sorry, that's the old one.
Two more things technically, Chris.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I know, hold on, I have it.
Yeah, he's here.
What's up?
He's been a good boy.
He's been very patient, hold on, I have the, it came from George, right?
Yeah, it came from George. But I have, I don't know if this is the one.
I know there was a rendering, but I know there's pieces of it are missing still?
I think this is the most up-to-date version, yep.
Okay, alright, so just to refresh the board, they were, applicant was back before us, last month, says some discrepancies between what was built and what was approved. Evan and I had a meeting with Ming, his design, and his lawyer, and gave him some feedback. So this is what they've worked on, they've sharpened their mices, mice came back with a new rendering, and now they're before us tonight to see if they're on the right path going forward. Summed that up pretty much right?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
Do you have the original?
Of what, what's built there now?
That was the original pool.
I do. I'm vying it tonight, I don't know about that.
Of course, this is another new application deal.
Ah, in essence. So this is the, this is the original. I think they've, again, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, the rendering on the right side here is still being elongated, right? I think that was.
Yeah, we actually took measurements of the rendering at scale, and it matches what we have right now. It doesn't, to the eye, it doesn't seem that way.
Okay.
But, this is pretty much the, uh, dimension.
So what the applicant is looking for this board tonight is, before they make a formal submission back to us, is, do we think they're going down the right path, or is there any other feedback that we want to provide to them?
What is the exact color tone of what appears to be white on it?
Currently, it is a peach.
How currently, what is it, what is it going to be? Like, what are you proposing?
Um, well, we're proposing what you see.
Is that white?
It's going to be an off-white, yep.
Oh, it's an off-white?
Yeah, and then they changed the pink or peach, sorry, to this brownish color.
So we're trying to match the original rendering.
Yeah.
Rendering, and, uh, on the section closest to us, we took the comments that the planning board made last time, just made it all brick.
And they've added the additional, the windows back over the portico. I learned a new word.
You learned a new word?
I learned a new word, and, uh, the, the windows back on the lower side as well.
So basically compared.
Corte crochet.
So compared to the original approval, it's sort of just flipped, get the white got bigger, light got bigger, really, right?
It did, but.
It's not, yeah, I think it's.
I think with the addition of the, with the addition of the windows now, it breaks up that.
Breaks up that one side.
That monolithic thing that was there.
Yeah.
I, I think the other part that we talked about a little bit, but is on, in the new rendering is landscaping, like the low landscaping in front of the, uh, the base of the building.
So, off of our landscaping plan, this is kind of what we have, but I took the comments that the board made last time about how you wanted the rendering to be true to life, and we are going to redesign our landscape plan, so shrubs, and, um, if you want to go to the original rendering, it's just going to match that.
Okay. I think we're on the right, I think we're, I think we're on the right path, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if we submit this along with the, um, landscaping, we're good, or?
Well, I, there are other site plan issues, so, but as far as this look, yes, I think you'll be okay with this.
Okay.
But you do have a memo from Natalie with some outstanding issues, right?
Yes, yeah, our, from the last appearance before the board, we issued a memorandum, you should have a copy of that, so you should go through, I think there was a whole section on site plan issues and changes that have come up in the field, um, you know, so you should kind of go through that one, line by line and address them, and I, I think also there were additional comments from the board at that meeting, so the minutes are available online, or you can watch the YouTube video to get a full, comprehensive, I, you know, list of things that need to be updated.
All right, yeah, I got my homework. Uh, the only thing is, I think our engineer, the engineer that we originally retained on the job was J, is Jason Penagaro.
Yes.
And I think now he's affiliated with the town, that's not a conflict in any way, right?
With the town, if he's with the town of Woodbury, no, it's not a conflict for the village.
Okay, cool. All right, so yeah, we'll have him make the edits, and we'll send it to you, and he'll talk to you, and, you know, you guys will figure it out.
Yeah, you submit it to the building department, and then we'll review it as part of our next review for the next planning board meeting that you're scheduled for.
All right, sounds good.
Sorry for the, wait, I didn't realize.
No, 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 I mean, you know, this was quick and easy, so, we're good? All right, thanks for.
Thank you. All right, have a good night. All right, and Natalie, I will let you go with, uh.
Sure.
The last one.
Yes, so I circulated to the board, um, the shops at Woodbury is requesting a field change for the proposed gate at the emergency entrance off of, um, thirty-two, thirty-two, yeah. Um, so essentially, what was originally proposed. Yeah, it was an eight-foot chain-link fence gate, it's just a gate, you know, a chain-link gate, and now they are proposing a galvanized swing gate to be painted black, um, and they've made the point that adjacent to where the gate is proposed, there's a wooden guardrail and essentially a dumpster enclosure, so really, there's nothing for this chain-link gate to connect to, and it sort of stands out, you know, could be potentially an eyesore and maybe not necessary versus what they're proposing now, this swing gate, um, so essentially.
Do we have anything on the swing gate that they're proposing or not?
Yes, there's a, yup, there's the detail for it. So.
Sorry, we got to the, the meat and potatoes of this here, right?
Okay.
Oh, no, this is, yes, yes.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
No, yes, no.
Is this the new one or the old one?
This is, I have it as some, uh, what's it, they don't.
Yeah, there it is, the fence and gate detail at the bottom there is the new one, so what they have.
Okay, so this was what was going to be there?
That was, no, that's actually for the dumpster enclosure.
Okay.
And where you went back on the, your tab that says approved gate detail, um, yeah, where it's outlined in red, that was what was approved originally.
And what are we looking at now?
Okay, so this is what was approved.
That was what was approved, yeah.
And then this is what they want to put.
Right.
Is it just a crash gate, basically?
Basically.
Right. And I mean, so I think from their standpoint, you know, practically, they think that this is more appropriate, you know, from a visual aspect and things like that, um, you know, I'm bringing it to the board, you know, to get any comments that you have.
It's not silver.
It'll be painted black.
Chief Burke didn't take any exception to it, as long as they're given the right amount, you know, they put a Knox box lock key up.
So that you get in and out?
A padlock that matches the Knox box key.
Okay.
And then they were just, um, so, yeah.
Right, so I think your ambulance responded, that they wanted four keys, um, otherwise you didn't get anything from police.
I was going to say, what about?
Cops didn't say anything.
But they don't.
The only, only issue is, is that there'd have to be two separate padlocks on it, there'd